I'm the Council meeting for February 22nd in the border. And, you know, we always start out with the Pledge of Allegiance and want to welcome the Boy Scout troop for being here. This is troop, what, 210?
220 and 219. There's a member from 219.
220 and 219. Welcome, welcome. We always start with the Pledge of Allegiance and I think Evie ought to come down here and lead us. Would you do that? Okay. Take center stage right there. And you start us out.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good job. What a proud mother.
No.
Okay, folks, did you have a chance to take a look at the common council minutes for January 25th?
Shada, I did mention Ryan Chidinsky's name.
That was one, and I could not remember. I didn't write it down. So Ryan Chidinsky, I will make a correction.
Good.
I should have emailed you. I started to email you and say, I knew you had another name.
Move to approve as corrected. You have a motion to approve as corrected by Goodman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Smith. Those in favor? And it's unanimous. Do we have somebody zooming in, by the way?
I think the only one was the Sentinel had requested to join us.
Okay.
But I don't know if Wes is on there.
And of course, we have RTC in the back. How are we doing back there?
Doing good. Second time here today.
Yeah.
You should have just stayed.
Thank you for being here today. That was a red letter event. Appreciate your company.
Absolutely.
We have the Board of Public Works and Safety Minutes for information only, folks. Going down to Communications and speaking of the red letter day that we had today, I want to read something for the permanent records of the City Council. We normally do a proclamation and read it for the permanent minutes of the Board of Works. And I think the event today was big enough that we need to do it at both places today and then Thursday. Today, we proclaim that this is Marshall Fishback Day, our heavyweight wrestler who won the state Saturday night. Marty, first time in 56 years. Burns Beck is somewhere jumping for joy right now.
Yes, he is.
Did you ever wrestle for him?
He made me. I was on the first wrestling team in Rochester.
He kept walking through the cafeteria, taking bread off my plate, saying, you need to be at practice tonight.
Yeah, he was, he started the program. He started the wrestling.
Burns Beck, yes. You know, I weighed a butt can. I didn't see me in the band. It's been on wrestling team. And since that time, I've seen a few practices and it looks like boot camp. Coach Guard knows it. They don't stop for anything. So we want to take a moment to put this in the official record. It's the, we had 40 wrestlers here today. We had Marshall sitting here at the mayor's seat and the other three gentlemen who also wrestled at the state. They weren't successful, but they wrestled at the state. And I said, Marshall, you're here and you're three posse. I said, it looks like Wyatt Earp and the four of you that took over the OK Corral, you know? And he says, who's Wyatt Earp? Okay. Be it known to all citizens of Rochester, Indiana, that the Honorable Theodore J. Denton, Mayor of Rochester, has proclaimed Tuesday, February the 22nd, in the year of our Lord 2022, Marshall Fishback Day. This honor is bestowed on Marshall in recognition of his being the first Rochester high school wrestler in the history of the sport to win a state of Indiana wrestling title. This accomplishment was achieved in Indianapolis on Saturday, February the 19th, as witnessed by his teammates, coaches, and numerous Rochester followers present as well as on television. This achievement complemented his senior wrestling record of 45 wins and one loss and a TRC conference title. Today and for years to come, Marshall is to receive his hometown's gratitude and admiration for his outstanding performance and continuing leadership. Respectfully presented this 22nd day of February by Theodore J. Denton, Mayor of Rochester, Indiana. And there were like, say, 40 of his teammates here to support him and they were all assuring the mayor, they'd be back next year. Okay. Public hearings. We go down, we've got the second reading for the personal property tax abatement for the Power Transmission Components LLC. And I don't believe we need any more presentations. We just have to open it up for a public hearing. So I'll do that right now. We'll open up the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the base? The Power Transmission, folks, are asking for a tax abatement. Purchase the Gertie buildings. And, what, refresh your memories, going to hire about 10 folks right away. Machinists, pretty decent paying jobs. We had the first reading, if you remember, for the last meeting, and now the public meeting. Anybody have any comments from the public? Okay. If there are no further comments or discussion, we'll entertain a motion to close the public meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Moved by Goodman, seconded by Garrett to close the meeting. Those in favor? And the meeting is closed. It's unanimous, Shada. Okay. Now I would entertain a motion for the second reading of the...
No.
Third.
We have a, it's a completely...
Sorry, third reading.
No. It's a confirmatory resolution, so it's a completely new resolution. The first one is the declaratory resolution.
Okay.
From January. This is confirmatory.
Okay. Okay, the confirmatory resolution, same number, isn't it?
No, it's a different number.
Okay.
Resolution 3-2022. And you'll have to read one time?
By title only. Is that true?
(Inaudible)
Motion is being made by direct to read it one time by title only.
I'll second.
Seconded by, you have those in favor? Okay, sir, by title only.
Resolution number 3-2022, confirmatory resolution, application of Power Transmission Components LLC for the designation of economic revitalization area and approval of tax abatement.
Okay, those in favor are passing Resolution 03-2022, signified by raising your...
I move for the adoption of Resolution number 3-2022.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor? Okay. So be it. Okay. The whole business that we have is council president and board appointments for council members. We're a little, a little late in the process here, but anybody have a motion for the presidency?
I would move that Brian Goodman maintain the presidency.
And I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved in a second, hasn't it?
They can move it. We closing our...
Okay, those in favor closing the nomination, signified by raising your right hand. We have one abstention.
Okay.
Okay. Those in favor then of Brian Goodman continuing as council president, raise your right hand. Okay. One abstention. Congratulations.
Ryan, did you abstain?
I did.
Okay.
Congratulations. Okay, board appointments. Anybody in want of changing their assignments or discussion on that? I don't, I don't have any issues with the folks that have been covering anything. I don't know that, heard from any of the committees or the boards or anything that you cover. You think they need somebody else? It sounds like everything's co-op setting. Do I have a motion to continue the services for the board appointments as they now stand? Moved by Goodman. This is where he gets back to everybody. Do I have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Seconded by Garrett. Those in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, new business. We have 2021 area plan report.
Heather was, she was in the notes that she was not going to be able to count the amount, but she did her by and I gave her then copies of her area. I just needed some help with the rest. As far as her, what she provided, she said, if any, as a council, if you guys had any questions about her report, just get in touch with her.
I would suggest to the council that we tabled the report and asked Heather to join us next month. I think it behooves us to have her here. I mean, she has not given her first report to us yet. We need to meet Heather and walk through that. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll move to table.
Marty Smith moves to table. Tell next meeting. Seconded by Goodman. Those in favor? Okay, thank you all. I think that can have any...
I will let her know.
Okay. Okay, before we get into the department reports, Boy Scouts back there, we've got, again, we've got troop 220 and troop...
219.
219. Anybody like to say something or tell us a little bit about your scout activities and just why you're here tonight? It's a public meeting. Anyone's invited to.
Anybody? Why are you here tonight?
No.
Or your merit badge. Citizens of the community? Stand up and tell them.
Step right on up here. Come on down. Now, when you were here last week, weren't you one of them that sat up here? No, you didn't get to sit up here. Where'd you sit? Clear over there? Okay. We had, I'm glad, like, 40 of you here last week. Well, damn. Well, tell us a little bit about the troop.
Well, there's something I'm going to get the winter starting thing. It's a bag and I think it fell and slipped.
Oh, you slipped. Okay. Did you, did you report that to your scout leader? Because I'm sure they have a very good insurance program. They probably have a Smiths or a Smith. Did you write that down, Marty? Anything else? Did you, did you want to report what you were doing here last Wednesday? What we talked about?
(Inaudible)
No, you got that in your notebook? Wasn't it the Constitution of the United States and the Ten Bill of Rights, right? Yeah. And we were, we were concentrating on the first, first one of the Bill of Rights, which was freedom of...
Talking.
Freedom of talking.
Yes.
Yeah, that's very close. Back when they were putting this together, they said, Mr. Franklin, no, let's try speech. That sounds better. Freedom of speech. And there were three other freedoms, right? Freedom to...
Vote.
Okay, freedom to assemble, wasn't there? Yeah. That meant we could, we could meet, right? And have meetings without worrying about somebody coming in and saying, you need to go home. You know, you can't do this, right? And freedom to go where on Sundays?
Church.
Freedom of religion. What was the fourth? Let me see if he can help you with that. Go over there. See if he can help you.
How about the press?
X.
(Inaudible) Freedom of the right.
Freedom of the press. Right, right. Very good. It was, yeah, about 40 of these youngsters are here. They're learning a lot. They, they, they're getting a lot of good stuff. And you scout leaders, you're doing a wonderful job. You really are. And it's very impressive to me to hear some of the things these kids know. But again, we thank you very much. Anything else you want to share with us?
Why, why are you here tonight?
Because I'm here for a merit badge.
Do you remember which merit badge? Citizenship of the...
Patients.
Citizenship of Communications for Communications. Okay.
Good job.
Yeah.
She said, it's, she said Communications, Community.
Oh, right.
Thank you.
Community. Yeah.
Good job.
Good job. Takes a lot to come up in front of a bunch of people like this. Okay, Department reports. Chief Butler, you'd like to start out?
Good evening. For January 2022, structure fires two in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township. Mutually, it's one in Mentone, one in Henry Township, one in Macy. Vehicle fires, one in Rochester Township. Auto fire alarms, one in the city. Rush field fires, one in the city. Calls for smoke, one in the city. Accidents, two in the city, two in Rochester Township, one in Newcastle Township. Medical assists, 27 in the city, 12 in Rochester Township, three in Richland Township. Gas leaks, one in the city. CO checks, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Cancelled calls, three in the city, two in Henry Township for a total of 65 calls. And we conducted one night of drill training. Pending your questions, that concludes my report. Anything for Chief Butler?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Shada, supposed to be here this evening. Got anybody seeing that? Yeah, we got Randy sitting over. Randy, storm water projects and other projects?
Well, well, the street department files now. I got the community crossing applications submitted for the main street sewer project. The ADA ramp at Huts is in. They finished the handrails. So that's all in now.
Looks very nice, by the way. Looks great.
I did get hold of Ted Redinger today and we're working on the permit. We're going to see about combining ours for the boring and theirs for the street lights for the end dot.
For the night lights.
Yeah.
We have left.
And the proposed delivery date's April 19th for the light poles and March 8th for the lights themselves. So that's all I got right now.
Yeah, we've got a lot of stuff going on. Way Street and Plan Project moving along pretty well. Marcus in that back there? No?
No.
Moving on pretty good. We've got construction coming up here in about a week.
Yeah, it looked like they was putting the building up for their, or putting the roof on their one building for their bag, their de-watering bag. So, yeah, they're moving on.
You want to share the comments that, that you had shared at the park board about our investigating work going on right now with the pool? I think we talked about it a little bit last week. They kind of zeroed in on a range for what we need to do.
Yeah, Commonwealth's checking in on, giving us three different scenarios for the pool, on repairing it. Their estimates about a two-year lifespan if we leave it like it is now. And then it's going to really need major repairs. But their range is one and a half million to three million, or four million, excuse me, to completely go through it.
Yeah, one is a modest, you know, upgrade of everything that's there currently. And the one on the other end is warm. And it kind of reminded me of the sandals commercials, you know? So it's going to be, yeah, probably some place in the middle. What they'll be coming up with. You'll have to decide where we can get the money for that. Get some rand help and such. And there are some things available. There's a lot of money out there right now, I guess, at this stage.
Is that for, is that for just revamping it?
Yeah. Well, no, it's going from the less expensive side to revamp, changing the complexion of it completely.
Just the complexion. I don't, just, not just paying. What are you talking about, restructure?
Yeah.
Structurally?
Yeah, bringing it into the world of what the pool is a little like today. There's, we got a very, we got like a limbing pool out there that's, they're not put up together like that much anymore. And so, yeah, they come to us with pools. They've had some designers to look at. They come to us with some, there's a lot of new things coming along that blend themselves more to the splash pad kind of world. So, and, and the other thing that was quite interesting that will probably may shock some people, but may not, because we used to have a high dive diving board. No, regular type of diving board. The high dive diving board, as I understand it, was removed because of liability issues years ago. It's continued to get crazy in that world with the regular diving boards. Yeah. You're looking, the YMCA's and such have eliminated them. And so, you know, the things they bring back to us will cover some of these bases. And hopefully, what we end up with, we're able to find some money for. And we can put something in place that'll last another 50 years. But we're still working the due diligence, aren't we?
Yeah.
Ted, and one of the big things is the filtration system.
Filtration system is...
That is, that is a, a big component to this because we've been grandfathered in with our current system. But if we touch it to renovate it, and we, we've known this for a while.
Have to bring it up with the...
We have to bring it up to our code. So that is a big, big ticket right there.
And IDMS involved. There's certain things you can't do, you know? And so, we're going through all of those, those hoops right now. But we'll have it all firmed up here probably in another month or so. But we've got some real room, but we don't have a lot of breathing room. Two years can go by pretty quickly.
Right.
You want to tell them what you're doing with our small conference room? We do have a lot, a lot of projects on our plate. Those of you who've been in the office and know we have a small conference room between Shada's office and mine, want to tell them what we're doing there?
We're putting up whiteboards, gonna put the projects on them, which the reason they're not up is because one was bent and the other one, Dwight and I was out working on a, on a man-to-man part drive today, pretty much all day.
Oh, I wasn't going to call you on the part of the...
But...
No, no, relax, Randy. I just wanted to tell what our thoughts were in there.
The big one just came today.
Did it?
Yes. So, whatever.
Yeah. We've got, we've got a big whiteboard that's going to go clear across one wall and then two smaller boards is going on each end of the small conference room. And we've turned the tables, so it's, well, Shada turned the tables, so I'm going to give you your props.
I, you don't need to give me credit on that.
Yeah, well, I mean, you came in and told me you needed a little credit, so I'm giving it to you.
I did?
Yeah.
The council over here invited into here.
Well, yeah, when we get the whiteboards up, we'll bring you in. But...
You're welcome to go look at it now.
(Inaudible)
Well, we've accomplished a lot of things, but we've got about 10 going right now that involve poker grants and the community crossing grant for the project down on Main Street. And, you know, we've got several things going on. And we, we thought, okay, it's time that we put this together in a room where we can come in and take a look at everything, you know, right here in front of us in the goal. And the people involved can come and go and have meetings in there. Friends spread out back there and talk about numerous different things. We'll have it right there. So bring a little organization to it, aren't we?
Yeah.
We're getting that busy. And you're doing a great job. You really are. I didn't underestimate chops at all. You get that. Any questions for Randy?
Randy, do you know if Marcus received the parts from Airvac yet for the vacuum system?
No, I don't.
Still waiting.
I don't know whether he got them or not.
Yeah, we are, we are having some meetings in regards to that issue as well. I'll have to let you, let you know what's happening there. Okay, thank you, Randy. Wayne, Street Department and the Parks Department?
Really haven't done too much this month, except push snow, keep the streets clear. And appreciate the, the public has been very patient with us and we've had a lot of positive feedback. There's been a few places we missed, but overall, it's been, so far, it's been a good winter. And been helping Randy with a lot of the same things that he mentioned for the park. We're...
You want to, you want to bring a little bit on what we're doing in the snow removal world? We're, we're getting another plow, if you will.
Right.
It's going to allow us to have all of our manpower to tackle these things. We had the big snow, this last big snow, we got a foot of snow. Dwayne called meeting and we all met the Monday before the big snow. Everybody. Tom was there. Everybody. And we put together a manning list of all the equipment we had that could push snow and the personnel who could handle each of them. And we've, we've grown way away from, well, that's not my department. These gentlemen all worked very well together. And we had people furloughed the, the street department to push snow when we needed to do it with their equipment. So we put that all together. And then when it came, he had a plan of attack and he did it very well. It worked very well. And really has brought some, Dwayne has brought some order to that kind of, to be proactive. And you did a good job.
Thank you.
Also opened up a new world of beet juice, right?
Actually, we're working on some of that right now. A lot of, well, you see, like with the state highway, they're using liquid de-icer. It's basically salt brine that they're putting down. We also add what's called beet juice. It's a, actually a byproduct of ship making sugar through beets. That's what's left over is, actually, they found is a good anti-icing, the de-icing component that we use. And so, we're right in the kind of education stage right now, doing fact finding and putting some numbers together. I think in the future, what we envision seeing is, is using more liquid, less hard material that is going to save us on salt. It's also going to reduce the amount of salt that gets put down on the street so that on the environmental side, that's going to help with that. So it'll also reduce the amount of sand. And so, there'll be more to come on that. But we're just in initial stages of going through all that.
We, we have used beet juice for about a year. But there's, there's a couple different types of beet juice. Beet juice we have used, you mix with your salt and your sand and spray it. And you get some, you know, better melting properties for ice and snow. Intersections and such, we've used it a lot. But when you see a state highway or a state road where it's completely clear, you know, there's no snow, there's nothing. They're using this in a liquefied form, more of a liquefied form. And they just spray it out. And it is a little pricey, but it, we kind of looked at the fact that if we could utilize some of that throughout our town, we'd cut down on man-hours. And so, they're doing their study right now. We're doing it in concert with John Geier. John is very interested in it as well. And the guys are working with John. The guys are working with John, and we're sharing our information, and we're also sharing thoughts on how to apply the beet juice. You can't have six guys out there with Hudson spray here. That just doesn't work. So, that investigation is going on right now. And these kind of things only make our street department more and more efficient as we continue to do what they have to do. Thank you for that. You're doing good stuff.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anything on the parks?
We're supposed to receive a new tractor and a twelve-foot mower this spring. That's gonna cut down on our man-hours for mowing, and it's also gonna reduce the number of mowers we need. And so, we'll get that in May timeframe, and they'll have that delivered to us. And then we can knock out summer mowing better, quicker, cheaper than what we have, less equipment.
One of the projects that we're into now, and the way we just completed, we might say like phase one, we decided, as we reported to you folks, to take on the duties of Minnow Creek. And that's gonna be included in our storm water program and in our storm water utility. And we're working with the folks at O-CR and our Commonwealth Engineering folks on a revamp of Minnow Creek clear, clear out, so that the flooding and such that has gone on for years there for our residents along there, we're gonna alleviate all of that. In this investigation, we found out that your ditch assessments, none of them went to Minnow Creek, they all went to Mill Creek. So, we're, we're gonna jump on this. Some of the ARPA money's gonna be used, but the first phase, we, we did what? We spent a couple thousand dollars to...
Right. We cleaned out around behind Riddle School at the culverts that go over the bridge to tie both the properties together for Riddle School. We cleaned that out and did an assessment of the culverts there. And now, it's with Commonwealth, we're looking at replacing culverts at Sixth Street and also behind Riddle School, so that we can increase the flow through Minnow Creek.
Yeah, the first, the first stage was cleaning, pulling out stuff that was in there. And we wanted to do that before we got this huge snow, so we did. And now, we're starting to see some of the benefits of it. It's flowing.
Right.
And up until then, it was flowing all right, right out to somebody's yard. So, that's going on. That's, that's huge. That's huge. Thank you, guys, for, for doing that. We just talk about projects and what we need to do. All of a sudden, you turn around and between these two, they've got moving going on. Anything else?
Just wanna give a shout-out to our other departments, Fire Department, Wastewater, and the Water Department. They've really helped out and put the snow and everything. And Tom really is one initiated our, our meeting for the plan. He's the one that really...
You told me it was you.
I may have said we need to have it, but it was Tom that actually pushed my button to get that going, so...
Well, and Tom got you set up with cots and stuff.
Right.
Over the plant, so if people wanted to stay, because they really have to be back in a few hours, we got the facilities ready to do that. Anybody utilize the fire station for a warming center, Tom?
No, we didn't have that, that, the need. Fortunately, the storm wasn't that bad. We had no loss of power. Like a couple years ago, when we had the ice storm, when we had lost, lost power, we set it up. It wasn't utilized, neither was the school. But I did communicate with the superintendent, and we were both on standby should we needed to pull the trigger. If we would've had maybe a catastrophic accident like you've seen on other places on thirty-one, if that would've happened here, we could've had a place to shelter people in place. But fortunately, there wasn't no need, but we did have a plan. Waiting to execute. Got with the EMA, so we had the Red Cross cots, blankets, instead of the two facilities, but nothing was needed, so we stood that down.
Great. Anything else?
All good.
Okay, Marcus wasn't gonna be here tonight. Derek is not here this evening. He's not on vacation, but they're, they're still resting, so... Okay. Go on down to reports of committees. RDP, nobody here from RDP. We haven't heard from Harry for a long time, have we? Probably oughta reach out to him and see what's happening. LMA? Yeah, there's none. We haven't heard from David Heide for a while. Anybody called, been on the agenda for the next? No? Okay. Ruth is not here. Fedco, Ryan Goodman?
All right, Fedco met February eleventh. We welcome new board member Ryan Mulligan, replacing Jane Murphy, her time was up, and she elected not to re-up, so he's taking her spot.
Just a question to Ryan for answering?
Joe Coak was voted the publicity and data co-chair on the board. We went ahead and signed a contract with a consultant to help us in the restructuring that we're, we're looking at. The work on Blackwater continues. We had to, we, we signed the contract to get the water pipe finished. The price of that was going up by the day, and availability was pretty rough. So, we signed the contract, and it's on the paper, the county allocated funds to help complete that project. The next obstacle we're looking at is with NIFCO, the gas lines. But we have sold, sold lots. There's some more lots available to be sold, and so, there was income coming from there.
Sold one lot? Not lots, one lot?
No, there's another one.
Another one?
Right, there's two more.
Milton's painting, right?
Right, I'm talking about two other lots, other than Milton.
Okay.
There's another...
Got money on the date.
Funds, and I think the agreement has been signed.
Okay.
Or I could be making it up to make myself look good. Tiffany has reported that the hiring committee has posted the Fedco job. It's online and with the Sentinel. And we did the resolution tonight for me to move in, so, any, any other questions? That's my report.
So, any questions for Ryan? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Redevelopment Commission meets in the morning, eight-thirty. Attorney Perkins has been invited to come. We're elevating the, the status and the work of the Redevelopment Commission. As you know, we've been working on our own, been running our own consultant now for a little while. Some of the things are gonna happen tomorrow. The new president Brett, Brett Coulon has asked the board to bring their three choices for projects they believe we need to take a look at from the Redevelopment Commission state. I would like to engage the Redevelopment Commission to help us with our ordinance packages. Here, as you see, we've not had any activity in looking at ordinances for some time. The committee don't look at that, put some suggestions together with this council back home. And Attorney Perkins is coming to discuss the possibilities of an ordinance court after we do that. Lots of properties throughout our town and community that we deal with on almost a regular basis, trying to clean up Rochester. And our ordinances and such are so outdated, there's very little statute for it in the state. And we talked about this, what, my first year in office? Andy? Yeah, and Andy did some research. The other communities, they, they pretty much established ordinance courts. There's, you know, it's like the small claims where people have to go and, and face the situation. You know, it, it, when you get somebody who's sitting in the middle of a neighborhood like that, it isn't fair to the neighbors to be pulling down the value of the property because somebody doesn't wanna keep theirs in order. So, that, that's going to be talked about the Redevelopment Commission tomorrow. Okay, Hart Board, Jason?
No report from me.
Okay, good job. Rochester BZA and Council on Aging, Councilman Smith?
Sure. Mine will be brief as well, because both of my groups are meeting after tonight's meeting. So, BZA tomorrow night has one thing on the agenda. It's a, a guy wants to put a second story on his garage, which is gonna be taller than the house, which is not permissible, so he needs a variance for that. And the other thing I would say about the BZA, that these people have been earning their dues, and have been doing a great job. And it's a testimony, they've, they've been busy, and they've been working hard, so they're doing a good job. As far as Council on Aging, we meet next Monday, because we meet the fourth Monday of the month. So, have not seen that agenda. I don't know what's gonna be on that, but... Any questions? That's the, that's my report.
Your, your comments about the Yulman's Duty that they've been doing are well-taken. I may have mentioned at the legislative breakfast last Saturday that there were questions about the project at the south end of town, the Meadows Project, the six-hundred-and-sixty low-income apartments that, and they talked about duplexes and such. Our BZA, I was so proud of our BZA. They did their due diligence.
Yes, they did.
They knew the comprehensive plan that had been put together and made the right decisions. Five to nothing to turn down the exception request for the low-income housing. And I was very proud of that group. They, they did their investigation report before. They didn't have to table anything.
Pardon me?
Yep, yep. Okay, any, any questions for Marty? Thank you, Marty.
Yep.
Solid Waste and Animal Adoption Center, Todd's not here. Any, did you hear anything from him on whether he's still here or not?
Yeah, he, I told you that. He, oh, no, you weren't in here when I, I told the other person, yeah.
Quit doing that, geeper, geeper. She does that all the time. I told you ten minutes later, you know, you weren't in the room.
Yeah, no, most of the time you're in the room. You just choose, selective tree. But no, he was traveling, and he had emailed and said that he did not think he would be back in time.
Okay, okay. All righty, Tree Board and EMS, Councilman Fitzwater?
No EMS report, and the Tree Board, because of numerous illnesses, did not meet...
Yeah, I saw that, that blurb. Everybody, okay, any, no, okay.
Tree the newspaper?
You know, these days, these days you don't know, you know? Okay, Water Board, Councilman here?
Had a brief meeting, very brief. Most important thing is that everything's running exceptionally well, the Water Board. Really, the main update that they had was that they're still discussing having some other plans on that back wall. We're having some problems with it. We've got people coming in, and there's a way that we can go and build another wall in front of that wall. It's leaking. And so, they're gonna dig down and put a little drain in there, as I understand, and then build up maybe eight or ten feet. And they're working with us and getting the funds around to do it. Not quite sure what it's gonna cost. It's not gonna be cheap, but it's gonna be better than tearing the whole wall out. And well, that will endure, so we think that that's gonna be done, you know, in the, in the next few months. They approved outstanding checks of three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. And like I say, the plant was running well, and they just have everything going good, and that's it for the Water Department for this month.
Yeah, Derek kind of concerns me, because, you know, he is a history buff. He keeps referring to that as the Great Wall, and I'm a little concerned.
But it does, it definitely, there's, I was out there, and I was out there walking around, and it, it's gonna need some attention. It'll be done.
And we've had some, just hasn't made the board meeting, I believe. We've had some preliminary discussions with the engineering folks on the couple of water veins and couple of the housing additions, where we decided to use some arbitrage funds to loop those things. And we're still doing some engineering due diligence there, so that, that's progressing ahead also.
That's yet to come.
Yet to come, yes, sir. Thank you much, John. Any questions for John? Okay. Any, any legal issues? Andy?
I do not have any.
Okay, that's always good to hear. ADA concerns, Shotah?
None that have been brought to my attention.
Okay. Randy?
Randy?
No.
That's good as well. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Say it.
Okay, I'm just wondering, second by here, it goes. Thank you, thank you all.